Mayor, we're ready.
Ready? Okay. Hi, everyone. Is everybody ready?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Okay, this meeting is called to order. The April 28, 2020 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I will be asking my colleague Alex Montero, Mayor Pro Tem, to do the invocation. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Mike Tayeda. The invocation first, please. Okay, this meeting is called to order. The April 28, 2020 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I will be asking my colleague Alex Montero, Mayor Pro Tem, to do the invocation. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember- So there's a delay, so you can please advise the technical crew, please. And then we'll start once more over, once you establish that everything's okay. Can you hear me, Alex?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to start once more. If there's any technical issues, we'll have our administrators let us know. So the April 28, 2020 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Alex Montero to do the invocation tonight. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Mike Tayeda. Okay, so everyone, let's get started. Okay, we're going to start once more. If there's any technical issues, we'll have our- Hader, do you hear a delay, Hader?
Yes.
Yeah, it's repeated.
I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Alex Montero to do the invocation tonight. And we will be- Okay. Okay, so everyone, let's get started. Okay, we're going to start once more-
Councilperson, can you log off and log back on real quick?
Yeah, Olivia, you have to, uh, get rid of that, unmute it, yeah. You're one, okay, I am muted, right? Right thing to do, or what?
Councilmember Tayeda, we're talking to him. Everybody, this is still being, possibly televised, so just mind what you say.
Okay. So, okay. Yeah, yeah, but don't disappear, okay?
Okay, Mayor, we'll have everybody on mute. So we'll talk one at a time, and we're ready to go. That's good. Thanks.
Oh, Chief, real quick, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is there going to be a delay? Did you sort that out already?
I think we sorted it out. We'll have people on mute if there's any delay. And we'll make sure that everybody can talk one at a time. But you're good to go. There's no delay right now. You're good.
And Councilmember Tayeda is going to be on mute first, and then we'll call on them? Okay.
You can do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. We're gonna start again. The April 28, 2020 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'll be asking Mayor Pro Tem to do the invocation tonight. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Mike Tayeda. Mayor Pro Tem?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day, the beautiful day outside. And thank you for bringing us together to do the business of the city and the business for those who elected us to make strong and smart decisions. So thank you for this day again, and give us the wisdom to conduct this meeting with peace, love, and prosperity. God bless all, and thank you.
Okay. Why don't we all stand up and face the flag? Right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so. We'll start off today. We have a presentation by Councilmember Olivia Valentine on preventing elder abuse. Councilwoman, can you please go ahead with that?
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Patrice Genzo Springer, who is an advocacy organizer in the South Bay. She is a lifelong educator, retired from Los Angeles Unified School District, and has spent her past few years in Hawthorne. She served as president of the Hawthorne Linux Rotary Club, volunteered with nonprofits helping individuals survive domestic violence, and also worked in helping low-income individuals obtain jobs. She is currently working on raising awareness of elder abuse in the South Bay and is currently based out of the New Star Family Justice Center here in the city of Hawthorne.
Okay, got it. Alright, I'm gonna start right now. Thanks.
Ms. Springer, go ahead. Okay, Ms. Patrice Springer? Can you go ahead and get started?
Yes. Am I still unmuted?
You can go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Vargas and esteemed councilmembers. It's my pleasure, thank you, Olivia, for asking me to address the council this evening. You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and I think that elder abuse and domestic violence are issues that are kind of being hidden right now. There are people that don't have a voice right now that we need to all step up. And I'm hoping that the presentation tonight starts a conversation. I've gone to one of your commissions, a senior commission, and have made a presentation to them. I would like to go to the rest of the commissions because, you know, once you turn 55, we're considered as seniors. So all of you, if you don't think you are right now, I hate to tell you, we're all in that same boat. So, you know, how often are we hearing people allege elder abuse? And what scenarios are you hearing most frequently? These are the things that I want you to start thinking about in your minds. I'm wondering, is my PowerPoint coming up somewhere? Mr. Ishii? Okay. Okay, so we can go to the next slide? And that's me, everybody? Okay, we go to the next slide? So what is elder abuse? Elder abuse is a mistreatment or harming of an older person. It's an injustice that we all need to prevent and address. And elder abuse occurs in both community and institutional settings. So I think sometimes we think, well, you know, it might just occur at home, or it might occur in a nursing home. But there's different kinds of abuse that can happen to elders. There's physical abuse, there's emotional and psychological abuse, there's sexual abuse, there's neglect, and there's financial exploitation. Right now with the COVID-19, there's a lot of financial exploitation. A lot of people are getting checks in the mail, there are scam calls going on, you know, asking people for their social security numbers, asking people for their bank account numbers. And sometimes, you know, we're all anxious to get our money, and we think, you know, okay, we're gonna give this information to somebody on the phone. And somebody that is isolated, you know, we have to keep in touch with the people that don't have people that they can ask. If they get a weird phone call and they can turn around to somebody in the household and say, you know, should I answer this question? So it's going to be all of us in the community that are gonna have to take responsibility for helping these people. Elder abuse is believed to be widely undetected and under-reported. According to the U.S. Department of Justice and Department of Health and Human Services, one in 10 Americans over the age of 60 has experienced abuse or neglect, making it a priority issue for social justice. Elder abuse affects communities, the cost of elder abuse affects individuals and also our society. So we can't measure them sometimes, and it's tough to really keep track of the numbers of people that are affected by this. So they say that the numbers are some as high as 5 million in the United States, and only one in 14 cases of abuse are actually reported to an agency or somebody that can help that person. So just think of how many people are out there that aren't being helped. Okay, next slide, please. So elder abuse can occur when strong social supports are in place, and that are not in place and keep us connected as we age. While anyone is potentially at risk of abuse, some factors can increase one's risk of experiencing abuse: social isolation, lack of access to support services and community resources, physical, mental, or emotional needs in carrying out daily activities. Elder abuse can be prevented if we work together to create a strong society that values and supports all of us as we age. Elder abuse can happen when we are disconnected from our communities. And right now, I think a lot of people are experiencing that disconnection, that isolation. So just think personally, all of us that are sitting at home alone, some of us are not able to go out and have our social interaction that we usually have. Imagine, there's hundreds of people in our community that face that kind of isolation every single day. Next slide, please. So. These are the types of elder abuse: the physical, psychological, financial, sexual, neglect. All of these can occur at once. When you talk about physical abuse, it's use of force to threaten or physically injure an older person. Psychological and emotional abuse, it's verbal attacks, it's threats, it's rejection, it's isolation. Belittling acts that cause or could cause mental anguish, pain, or distress to an older person. The financial abuse, theft, fraud, misuse, neglect of authority, and use of undue influence. So most of the people that are committing elder abuse for financial are family members that become responsible for a person's financial, you know, well-being. And sometimes, you know, it's really difficult. So what I'm trying to do in the community is to create awareness to all of us so that when we are in a situation where we don't have control of our financial means, where we may become isolated, what is going to be our plans for that time in our lives? Next slide, please. So physical signs that we should be looking at: broken bones, bruises, welts, untreated bed sores, torn, stained, or bloody underclothing, sexually transmitted diseases, dirtiness, poor nutrition, dehydration, poor living conditions, lack of medical aids, glasses, walkers, teeth, hearing aids, medications, over or undermedicated. These are things that could be suspicious, and people sometimes are afraid to maybe report it. And I'll talk about, and a little bit about initiative that the city and the county have announced just a couple of days ago. It's called Behind Closed Doors. And they're asking essential workers to be aware of signs of abusive relationships and circumstances and to be able to contact authorities if they suspect that someone is in danger. Next slide, please. So the financial signs, emotional and behavioral signs, unusual changes of behavior or sleep, fear or anxiety, if you see this in people, withdrawal from normal activities, sadness. The financial signs, unusual changes in a bank account or money management. I don't know how many times I go out and I talk to people, and they say, you know, I know a neighbor, or, you know, my sister is going through this problem. I don't know, I can't tell you how many times personally I've learned about things and people's become aware that, hey, maybe I need to say something. Fraudulent signatures on financial documents, unpaid bills, these are signs of elder abuse. So you do not, if you report this, you don't have to prove that abuse is occurring. It's up to the professionals to investigate the allegations of abuse. So don't think that if you make a report, you're gonna have to give your name, you can be anonymous. And we're gonna be giving some numbers that people can call. I'm asking the council if you can please put this up on the numbers on your website so people could go to your website, get these phone numbers, and be able to call and get help for people that don't have a voice. Okay, next slide. So these are some of the numbers that are available for adult protective services. It's an 877 number. Anybody can call this. Of course, you can always call 911. Local law enforcement, the Hawthorne Police Department, they are there for the local protection of the community. And if they deem that there is something that is reportable, they will report it to the district attorney's office. There's a long-term care ombudsman program that will take care of you have people that are in facilities that you think something is going wrong, you can call that number. There's also elder care locator number. There's a lot of help, there's a lot of help out there. So just now, I told you, I was gonna be talking about the new initiative that the LA City and the County have announced just a couple of days ago. Behind closed doors, they're asking that essential workers be aware of signs of abusive relationships and circumstances and to contact authorities, and that flyer is going to be up on your website, hopefully. So through the Behind Closed Doors initiative, the city and the county are partnering with grocery stores, the LA Unified School District, and other organizations to post flyers in locations where people may be going out. Now, the numbers for, right now, since the safer-at-home orders have been issued in March, it's been said that there's been a 47% drop in reported physical child abuse and a 67% drop in reported child sexual abuse cases compared to this time last year. Now, that doesn't mean that it's not happening. That means that it's not being reported. That means that many of the people that are being abused, whether it's elder abuse, whether it's young people, whether it's domestic violence, they're at home with their abusers right now. And they cannot get to anybody that can help them. So what the city and the county is asking is for nonessential workers or essential workers that are still having contact with people. If they notice any of these signs, they should make a call to any of these numbers and report it. You don't have to give your name, you don't have to identify yourself. And you may be saving somebody's life, and there's a lot of help out there for them. So I want to thank all of you for allowing me to bring this information to you. And hopefully, when we're able to get out into the community and get in touch with people person to person, you know, we can start improving a lot of these things that maybe have gone unnoticed and unreported. So thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
You're associated with the New Star Family Justice Center here in Hawthorne, and I'd like for you to say a few words about what your work is at that place.
Okay. The New Star Family Justice Center, am I unmuted? Am I okay? So the New Star Family Justice Center is on Hawthorne Boulevard. And it's an all-inclusive center that has a lot of partners that go into the center so that people that go into the Family Justice Center can get services and their needs met. So if they are being affected by domestic violence, there's workshops, there's counseling, statistics for just domestic violence. Sometimes it takes, I'm gonna say a woman, because most of the cases are women. It takes up to seven times of a woman leaving a violent situation before she will finally leave for good. And so support for that individual has to be there until she gets to that point that she can finally leave her abuser. So I'm just one of many other partners that are associated with the Family Justice Center. And we're serving all of the South Bay area, but we're based in Hawthorne. So, you know, I feel like Hawthorne is at the helm of the ship because Hawthorne is the city where we're based at. And Hawthorne is the city where I'd like to see Hawthorne set examples and set in motion practices that the rest of the South Bay can follow.
Thank you. And so the New Star Family Justice Center also serves elders who are abused?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you so much, Pat Springer. We really appreciate this presentation. It was really excellent. And I think it gave us all a really good idea of the needs for us to be aware of the signs of elder abuse and what we can do about it in the South Bay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Be safe, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, councilmember. Thanks, Patrice.
Thank you.
Mr. City Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communications?
Yes, I can. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study investigation report and/or write- to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
So I'm understanding that you have some, I don't have the communications here. You're the holder of the communications. Do you have any communications from the public?
Yes, I did receive one email.
Will you be going ahead and reading that on behalf of them?
Yes, I will.
With the disclaimer that it's not you?
Yes, I'm going to actually state that right now. So, so this email is from Ruben Sanchez, President of North Hawthorne Community Association. "I hope you are doing well. This email is to inform everyone about activity at the cell towers in Eucalyptus Park next to the elementary school. North Hawthorne has been opposed to any cell tower-related work due to health concerns, especially without informing our neighbors first. We ask for all activities to stop at once so the public can have a chance to express their concerns. There have been various studies showing that higher frequencies and cell, frequencies in cell towers can harm human health. The residents' health should be a priority in our city." And he provided this image, which is a cell tower, and I will forward this to everybody. That's the first paragraph. The second paragraph. "We also have concerns about the RFK being used for a junkyard. There are hundreds of old vehicles being parked inside the condemned location." And again, he provided this image, which I will share with everybody. "We demand proof of air quality control documentation, city permit releases and a license to run a junkyard near homes where families live. This location has been condemned for over twenty years and should not be used as a business. It should open as a functioning business with proper licenses and permits. Why is the city permitting this kind of abuse? Please address these issues ASAP. Not only is the quality of life under assault, but our health is in danger. Yours for a better Hawthorne, Ruben Sanchez, President of North Hawthorne Community Association."
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. This is, this is a question for the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
At what point can we talk about this? What would be the most appropriate point? If not now, can we talk about it like right after we conclude oral communications or?
It's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about it.
We can't ask any questions of the city manager? We'd have to bring it back to discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right. If you could, just go ahead and, we'll bring it back and we'll determine when you bring it back. All right, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to address the body here? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed for order. Mr. City Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, please?
Yes, you may. And just FYI that I will be skipping one item because one of the council members was not available for the vote. And then I'll go back to it. So, Mr. Mayor, I have eight items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item six, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty. Item eight, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item nine, city treasurers request approval of the warrants. Item eleven, resolution number eighty-one seventy-seven, the resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the twenty sixteen seventeen development impact fee, annual report pursuant to government code section six zero six B. Item twelve, resolution one seventy-eight, a resolution of the city council of the city Hawthorne, California, appearing, approving the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen development impact fee annual report pursuant to government code section six six zero zero six B. Item thirteen, resolution number eighty-one eighty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming May third, twenty twenty through May ninth, twenty twenty as Municipal Clerks Week in Hawthorne. Item fourteen, resolution number eighty-one eighty-eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing certain designated city of Hawthorne officers to order the deposit or withdrawal of monies from the Bank of the West account for adoption.
Okay, so those were all the readings?
Yes.
Okay, so then it was, so the reason you wanted to go back on one of them was because one of the members of the council was not present?
Yeah, so for this one, we're going to have everybody vote and then we'll go back to the one where one of the council members was not present.
Okay, I think we have some feedback on possibly council member Valentine's.
I was saying move to approve.
I was just going to make the recommendation if there was one of the members not present, he can abstain from the vote. Is that correct or we would have?
No, no, we're going to vote, everybody's going to vote. And then I'm going to go ahead and read the item not present, so then we can vote again.
Okay, go ahead. So.
So go ahead. Who's going to second or who's going to? Who's going to move it?
I moved, I moved already to approve.
Perfect.
It's been seconded by Council, Mayor Proton Montero. Please vote.
Okay, so we will start with Councilmember Wad. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda? Was that a yes? Councilmember Tayeda? Yes, okay. Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Okay, so the next item, Councilmember Wad was not present for it. So it's item seven, approval of city council minutes for the special meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty.
How should we approach this for the sake of Councilmember Wad?
So we're, he's simply just not, he's not going to vote on this?
Okay.
So who's going to move it?
Move to approve.
Second.
There you go. All right. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city councils voting yes, except for Councilmember Wad, who abstained.
Yeah, does he have to state that?
Nope.
No? Okay. You checked already. Okay, cool.
That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, can you read the ordinances, please?
Yes, item sixteen, ordinance number twenty-one ninety-seven, first reading. In ordinances of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adopting by reference the twenty nineteen additions of the California Building Standards Code, California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Mechanical Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Energy Code, California Administrative Code, California Historical Building Code and nineteen ninety-seven Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, adopting local amendments to the referenced codes and adding chapters fifteen point zero seven Administrative Codes, fifteen point thirteen Energy Codes, fifteen point three zero Historical Building Code and fifteen point four six Uniform Code for Abatement of Buildings and Repealing and Reenacting Chapters fifteen point zero four, fifteen point zero five, fifteen point zero eight, fifteen point two four, fifteen point two eight, fifteen point three two, fifteen point three six and fifteen point four zero and repealing all prior additions of the California Building Code previously adopted by the city council.
I move to introduce. Thank you. Next item, please.
Ordinance number twenty-one ninety-nine, second reading. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, repealing chapter two point two seven, design review board and amending chapter seventeen point nine nine, design review to provide planning, commission, authority to conduct architectural and design review of specified projects for adoption.
I'll make the motion?
I can.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Everyone, please vote.
Okay, Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
You know, I'm not comfortable with this ordinance the way it is. And I'd like to have a little bit more time, if possible, to try to make this thing work out rather than scrap it right off the bat. I don't know if that's correct. I'll say that to the city attorney, but my vote will be no.
Okay, you have both, I mean, you voted no, but you would also have the option of abstaining. But if you're going to vote no, that's fine. Go ahead, Mr. City Clerk.
Okay, Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes, except for Councilmember Tayeda voting no.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Mr. City Manager, can we have your consent calendar, Mr. City Manager, please? Items nineteen through twenty-two on my consent calendar for your approval tonight.
Can I ask Arnie a quick question on number twenty?
Discussion. Go ahead. That's fine.
Hey, Arnie, is this a new project or is it an old project?
No, this is a new one, Councilmember Montero. This is a new grant that city has secured in a competitive grants of MTA. This is different from those local returns or Measure R or Measure M. This was a competitive call for project through MTA. So this is a new grant.
Okay, so, so is my understanding that we might have a light rail going down on Hawthorne Boulevard?
Are you talking about city of Inglewood?
Well, it, it, because it's like maybe a light rail going from the, from the metro station.
Oh, oh, okay. You're talking about the metro. Yeah, that is a very, very long shot in MTA. It's still in the planning process and it may not even go through. It's under a study by Metropolitan Transportation Authority. But this particular grant that we secured is going to basically involve from El Segundo Boulevard to one oh five Ferryway on Hawthorne Boulevard. It's involving upgrade to traffic signals and ADA ramps.
Thank you.
You're welcome. An intersection widening at Imperial Highway, sorry.
Yeah, great, great job.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question on two, two of them. Item number nineteen, Martinez Landscape Company. How long have we been working with them or they've been working for us? It was before even I came on board. So I cannot tell you exactly when, but I can tell you when I came here as a Director of Public Works back in two thousand and five, Martinez has been our. Are they, are they working right now during this time that we're here right now during the situation? During the shutdown, they're out there working and? Yes. Okay, good, so. Yeah, all the, you know, even though, you know, Mr. Mayor, we are not shut down. We have not shut down our operations. The only thing we shut down was unfortunately closing city hall doors to public. That hopefully we can open very soon in a month with, along with soft opening with other businesses. However, all the regular operations are still ongoing, whether it is contract work or city employee work. No, I thank you. I asked that rhetorically so that you could let the residents know that they're still working out there and things are being done. Absolutely, yes. Item number twenty-two, Jagley Engineering. Have they been working for us for a while or are they new? How satisfied are we with their work? Okay. And their thoroughness? Yes. No, they are a new consultant on board for building and safety. A city had a contract with two consulting firms for over two decades that our new building and safety director has decided to go out and solicit new proposals for consulting plan check. This is only when, hopefully, God willing, we have a new job, jumpstart in the summer with our economy. And when they are overwhelmed in the, this is to avoid having a queue and keeping people in line and delay the project so we can outsource plan checking to these consulting firms. So these are new onboard consulting firms. Okay, I would like to go ahead and make the motion.
I can.
Everyone, please vote. Mr. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, thank, thank you, everyone. Let's go ahead and move on to the city council discussion action items. I have a longer version here, but okay, go ahead. The city non-financial assistance to local businesses reemerging from COVID-nineteen economic crisis. Councilmember Valentine, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, and I have, I have another subtitle that I'd like to substitute. And I would call this Guidelines for Reopening Lower-Risk Hawthorne Businesses.
Okay.
So the governor said today that we are still at stage one, which is the stay-at-home stage. However, we're weeks away from moving to stage two. We want to assist our small business community in reopening once the stay-in-place order is lifted. The low-risk businesses are retail, manufacturing, offices and offices where telework is possible. We need to give our businesses guidance so as to make essential workplaces as safe as possible and give lower-risk workplaces a path to move to stage two. Though we're all waiting for the county to come up with guidelines which we will all follow. And when the guidelines are issued, we will post them on the website. Though nothing I say here is going to countermand what we, we may be guided, how we may be guided by the county. My sources for, for my suggestions are sba.gov, Guidance for Businesses and Employees, Cal OSHA, Guidance on Requirements to Protect Workers from Coronavirus, and the Governor's Briefings. The recommendations or, or suggestions I am making are based on guidance from those sources as well as my suggestions in order to cover areas where I believe the businesses could benefit from clearer guidance on the best and safest ways to gradually reopen. So I'm going to be very general because I expect to have specific requirements from the county and I want to make sure those, that guidance is followed when it does come out. So testing will be important and I'm certain there will be guidance from the county on testing employees. I have some ideas on testing, but I don't, I want to wait until the county comes out with their testing recommendations before I comment on testing. But I know that testing will be important. So employees should be sent home who have acute respiratory illness symptoms immediately. They should be sent home immediately. The CDC has, has, has provided guidance that if an employee is confirmed to have COVID-nineteen, employers should inform fellow employees of their possible exposure to COVID-nineteen in the workplace, but maintain confidentiality as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Employees exposed to a coworker with confirmed COVID-nineteen should refer to CDC guidance for how to conduct a risk assessment of their potential exposure. So refer to the CDC guidance. Employers should provide written information and training to employees on cough and sneeze etiquette, hand hygiene, avoiding close contact with sick persons, avoiding touching eyes, nose and mouth with unwashed hands, avoiding sharing personal items with coworkers such as dishes, cups, utensils and towels, provide tissues, no-touch disposal trash cans and hand sanitizer for use by employees. So now the office environment. Employers should have employees work from home when possible. Employers should perform routine environmental cleaning of shared workplace equipment and furniture. This is from Cal OSHA, by the way, this guidance. Employers should advise employees to check CDC's Travelers Health Notices prior to travel. Employers should allow flexible work sites, telecommuting, virtual meetings and flexible work hours to increase physical distance among employees. Employers should postpone or cancel large work-related meetings or events. Employers should, should use all means of minimizing exposure between employees, between employees and between employees and the public. Now, I'm not going to talk about the store environment because we're not there yet. Stage two does not provide for opening of all retail businesses. And at the time we do that, I will talk about or, or comment on what should be done when the retail stores are open. But for now, suffice it to say that any stores or retail businesses that open should enforce the six-foot rule between customers in the store and have sufficient signage to make that clear. So we want all businesses to be able to open safely. It's going to be a different environment. We hope it's going to be a safer environment. And the city wants all of you, all of your businesses to survive and thrive. So I'm going. So um I'm going to just um pass it on to my colleagues if there are any comments, thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to go ahead and start with some comments, uh, thank you for bringing this up. Um, the first thing that I wanted to note uh is that uh this, we, we have to do what we can as a community, as a city, as a state, as a county, and a country to be able to eliminate this cor- coronavirus and defeat it. That's the first thing and that's our first priority, so that, you know, we can move o- move ahead to those other stages that you're talking about. And uh, one of the disappointing things is that, you know, you see the reopening of the beaches, the reopening of certain like types of facilities like in neighboring Orange County, so what they do affects us because some of those people come to work in L.A. And so they, you know, they give, risk um giving this to us, you know, and spreading it further. So that being said, I think we all need to be uh, and what, I want accord all around, all la- all around the state to be able to fend off coronavirus.
And I think we all need to be very much aware of any unsafe practices that we observe um in the streets or in any businesses we go into, we need to be very much aware of that.
But the next thing I was going to related to this is that like, um, the importance of making sure we move towards that, if everybody's working together to fend off the actual virus, moving to reopening the economy uh is, is very important and the aid that you're trying to, that you want to compile for all these businesses because you are, you're giving information, Councilmember Awad's giving information, uh, Councilmember Teyeda, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Montero is giving s- information, so the city want, maybe if the city can have some single source of information. I received a letter, I've received fifteen of these letters. These are called warn le- warn letters. And what warn means, it's a worker adjustment and retraining notices. This is what you get when uh a business within your city is about to lay off employees. And in this specific company, there's about uh twenty-seven, twenty-seven employees that are being laid off. And I received about fifteen of this, so if you multiply that out, that's easily four to five hundred people within the City of Hawthorne that are being let go, so what you're bringing up is very important. Uh, we need to compile the information so that once we moved on to those next stages, uh, we'll be able to move on as comfortably as possible. But the priority is to be as safe as possible so that we, it, we minimize the exposure to COVID-nineteen. So right now, might not be the time to even think of that. But once that comes around, we need to have what you ha- what you are suggesting in place. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Miss Valentine, but uh one thing to keep in mind that uh we are a small city and we have to follow the Los Angeles County guideline and the Los Angeles Health Department, yes, we are part of that uh, the Health Department District, and also the State of California, so all these guidelines for Phase One, Phase Two have to come from the State of California and from the Los Angeles County and special from the Health Department that's going to lay out all the details how the business is going to be opened. So that is what we have to wait and to, for all those guidelines to come from the county that we can establish some type of uh, of resolution that to support the county initiative to go ahead to give the business the safe way to open their doors. Because you have to be very conscientious, that if you receive the report today, Hawthorne, you know, like eight, eighty-four thousand people, we have a hundred and sixty cases of COVID-nineteen and three deaths. So believe it or not, that's very high for a city, small city like us. So we have to be very careful uh the way we're gonna do things, uh, and I believe, you know, this Phase One might, might start in two weeks or not, but we have to wait until the state and the county dictate how we're going to do it. Because as, as, as a city, we have to be responsible for the L.A. County, also for the Health Department, and like Miss Valentine, I would say from the CDC guidelines, so this, uh, I know that a lot of people are wants to open this business, but we have to make sure that the life of our citizens is safe and we do not see no more uh, you, you know, COVID-nineteen infection going up in, in, in our city, so we have to be very careful on that.
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Mayor of Pro Tem Montero? And I agree with you one hundred percent on that. And, you know, I also see the importance of what Councilmember Valentine is saying.
Important, yeah.
Except, except that, orange, there, every, every city, every county, they're not looking at like we're, like we are here in L.A. County. So you have Orange County doing this, their own thing, they're messing it up for everybody else because they're not doing what they have to do to be able to minimize the spread of this thing. So there has to be some type of overarching order from the state. I know people, we, less government, et cetera, but in this case, we have to have some consistency between the application of this within the whole of the state. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'd like to make a clarification. I'm not in any way suggesting that we not wait for the county to provide guidelines, but that's not to say that we can't actually be thinking about what we should be doing. Because the county will provide guidelines and we'll have to follow the coun- county guidelines. But they will also be fa- following the CDC, they will be following the SBA, they will be following all of the um entities that I mentioned. They certainly will be following the Governor's guidelines, so none of these things are, will countermand what the county will say. And I'm not saying we should jump the gun and do anything now. I specifically said we're only in Phase One. But even though we're in Phase One, there are a lot of our businesses that are open. The, the, the so-called essential businesses are already open. So it's not too early to start thinking about how, what we want our, uh, how, how we want our b- businesses to function and how we want them to, to come back into um, into, into the full scope of, of business activity.
So, uh, Russell, uh, this is Alex, uh, maybe something to start think about that you, Arnie, and the Chief uh can start talk, thinking about. Uh, because later on, it's going to be the pin, you know, uh, in our police department to, to go around, make sure that people are practicing, uh, you know, uh, uh, the physical distance, that the restaurant's not going to have a lot of people inside. So all those kind of things that have to be started to think about how we're gonna do it uh for this Phase One and, and eventually the Phase Two that's coming up from this, from the state and from the county.
Through the chair, please.
Go ahead.
Uh. I think it's always good to have different points of views, you know? And I've listened, been watching and listening to the news and listening to people now for, ever since this thing started. And I think that um, people don't quite get the sacrifice that we've been asked to do. You know, we've been asked to go home, abandon our businesses, uh, uh, risk financial ruin. Um, I, I personally, and being in the real estate business, uh, um, nineteen ninety, uh, you know, I got wiped out completely, lost real estate, lost property, uh, lost everything. And that was because the economy was bad, but uh nevertheless, it's a terrible place to be when you're losing everything. I'm not talking about a little bit, I'm not, I'm talking about everything because most of these businesses don't have a lot of capital. They can't survive, uh, and it's really, I, I think that this is done. I think we're done, and I mean, I'm just giving you my opinion. People are pretty much gonna do it, they're going to go out and salvage whatever they can, whatever the cost. And you're starting to see that all over the place, you're starting to see it in Texas, you're starting to see it in Michigan, you're starting to see it all over the place, that this, and the, and then the word draconian. You know, that's a, that's a big word, I have to look it up. Uh, you know, you know, some of these regulations are very, very harsh. And um, and if I've got a little business and I'm about to lose my business and I'm about to lose my home and I'm about to uh, uh, go into depression, maybe have a divorce, uh, uh, this, this is creating all sorts of other problems. So the way that I foresee the future is that they're not going to be able to do what everybody thinks that the government is going to be able to force the people. I think the people are getting to the point where they're willing to take the risk as long as I can continue and, and, and not lose everything. And I think that you're going to start to see that a little bit and people are going to have to understand that aspect of the, of the coming challenge that um, nobody wants to see more people die.
Okay.
Nobody wants to see that, nobody wants to see the hospitals become overwhelmed. Um, but once they get to the point where they feel that the hospitals are not going to be overwhelmed, the people are gonna want to go to the beach and they're gonna want to go to a, a theater. And they go to the market every day. So markets are open, they've been open every day, people have been going to the markets and coming home and they've been functioning. And I, and I think just, and again, I mean, I'm just talking about my opinion, I'm not, this isn't uh, uh, i- it's just that you, you have to take into consideration that uh the, the business, people are getting to the, to the end of their patience and to the end of what they've been asked to sacrifice. So, n- not, the, the only people that have flattened this curve, it hasn't been the doctors, it hasn't been the, the ventilators, it's been the, the people willing to go home. That's been the biggest uh, uh, medication to bring everything down, is the people's willingness to go home. And I think they're getting pretty much uh, uh, at the end of their, uh, of their patients, anyway. Uh, I think that, I hope that this thing settles down uh quickly. Uh, but I, I don't think, I, I, I think they're being a little too harsh on the people. And I think that people uh have learned enough that they're going to do the right thing without having to be told what to do. And uh, because everybody's learned their lesson on this, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, but, uh.
I'm trying to speak on behalf of.
One at a time, one at a time.
If you look at Orange County, I don't, uh, at the Newport Beach and, and, and Huntington Beach, I don't think they learned their lesson because there was no, no physical distance, there was no six, six foot apart. So that's the, that's the danger.
I, I got.
Because, because we have about fi- you know, if you look at fifty-five thousand people have died in the, in this country and in Valley County, we have like a thousand deaths. So that is what we, uh, is to save lives, so that is what we need to be smart about how we're gonna open this business on a safe way that we will protect our citizens and that we don't want no to see no more, no more deaths, no more COVID-nineteen in our city. But that's what the, the priority that we have to look.
There, 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 it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a balance that is, you know, they have to find a balance. You know, there's a balance that needs to be, uh, not everything uh on the, on the brunt of, of uh, of the business, of small business people. Anyway, you know, I, it's a debate, it's a debate that's on, on every channel right now. It's not that I'm coming up with that or that you're right or that I'm right or you're wrong or wrong, but it's that debate.
Right.
You're starting to see that debate, uh, you know, go out to the streets.
Yep.
And it's gonna get more intense as time uh, in the very, very near future, anyway.
Any further comments from Council, Councilmember Awad, anything? No, every, everything okay? Okay.
It's good.
All right, so we'll uh, we'll go ahead and move on, um, this is we, we're put on notice that this is uh something that we may be starting to look at at the appropriate time. So we'll work, we'll move on to item number twenty-five, directing the City Attorney to amend ordinance number twenty-one ninety-eight, short-term rentals to allow a limited number of residents who both own rental property as well as reside in the City of Hawthorne to participate in short-term rental program as long as a cap is imposed on the number of participants in the program. Um, so make sure that everybody, I just want just you guys to know that, just make sure you guys get recognized through the chair um if you would like to speak. Mayor Pro Tem, Alex Montero has the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, um, because as, as you recall, you know, when we were debating on, on, on this short-term rental, uh, there was a, um, a gentleman that lived in Hawthorne. It, it is a homeowner, he lives in Hawthorne in one location and he has another property in another location, but in the City of Hawthorne. So we do not open, we don't want to open the gut plate for other people that live outside our city to be able to do short-term rent no more than ninety days. But his, his case is kind of different, so that's why I approached Russell to figure it out how we could um help him. Because when I went to North Hawthorne Neighborhood Association meeting, they were discussing about that the uh Hawthorne City Council was punished, the homeowners that live in the City of Hawthorne, not allowed them to do some type of uh short-term rental on a long term and because they said we are resident, we live here, we don't live in PV, we don't live in, in other cities outside the, the city, so we should allow some type of a, a break. So Russell, take over, please.
And uh, the Planning Commission already heard and they had some comments. And I think um, as long as we have the cap on it, the Planning Commission would be okay with this program of someone who both resides in the city and has rental property in the city.
But this isn't a rent, oh, through the chair, I guess I declared myself. Um, Councilman, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Montero, I understand exactly uh what you're saying. And, but how does this make this fair? I mean, they're doing it for the same type of purpose to, why don't they just rent this out through normal rental practices? Um, instead they're choosing this avenue in which to we're basically, we're basically shutting down those other people who live like outside the city and everybody because they're using it and abusing this situation. So how does it make it fair if we allow even somebody who lives within the city to use this avenue of, uh, avenue of making profit here, which seems to be kind of exploitative, go ahead, I mean, go ahead.
Through the chair, well, the thing is that uh, we don't, we do not want some other people to live outside the city that come in, buy properties and, and make them short-term rent. Okay, so we don't want them to be like those professional type of things that they just want to make money. This gentleman is a resident, his kids go to school here, he lives here, he invests in here, so he is the only one that if he not allowed to do more than ninety days, he's not going to be able to pay his mortgage. So, and, and that is when, when you go to the, to the community meetings, they kind like, you know, show me what would happen if they were not able to do that.
No.
So, and then you got, you got some other people out there saying that we have punished the homeowner that live in the City of Hawthorne because we don't, because of other people that live outside the city. So, so I don't want us to send a message that we have punished our homeowners that lives in Hawthorne. And, and, and then, and, and believe it or not, that like Russell said, there's gonna, there will be a cap because it's, it's not a lot of people that is going to do that.
How many, how many people do you have, are you familiar with any other cases like this or is this the only one?
It's the only one, actually, okay, I've been honest.
Okay, okay, and what would a cap play?
We can cap it at two, just at two.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a cap of two, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, so that's fine, okay?
Can I have a, can I have a second on that and a motion on that?
Does this call for a motion, Mister City Attorney?
Sure.
Okay, I'm.
Second, second.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote, please, Mister City Clerk?
Uh, Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Teyeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Vargas?
Um, yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council, Council voting yes.
Okay, we have a, we have an item from Councilmember Hadar Awad, eviction moratorium, residential and commercial. Go ahead, uh, Councilmember.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, yeah, I wanted us to um revisit the eviction moratorium and see how we can further help um both the residential side and our uh commercial businesses, um, kind of like what Mike mentioned that you're having a lot of individuals losing the back, you know, the shirt off their back. Um, it's very hard with the rules that are put in place of staying at home and what is considered essential and non-essential, it's, it's very taxing on the uh, the residents of Hawthorne. Um, so I, I know although there's a. Um so I I know although there's a countywide moratorium on eviction. It doesn't go quite far enough to protect the residents who are struggling to put food on the table, let alone pay rent. Uh these people who normally live paycheck to paycheck and now don't even have that. So Hawthorne needs its own moratorium to further protect our residents. So that's why I was considering, um and I want to direct our city attorney to draft an eviction moratorium ordinance for adoption at the next council meeting. Uh I believe it to be at least our few points, um to have it be retroactive to begin on March fourth. Of twenty twenty and run for thirty days past the emergency when it's lifted. Uh renters shall have up to May thirty first, twenty twenty one, to pay the rent they were unable to pay during the stay-at-home order. Uh we should encourage landlords and tenants to work out a reasonable payment plan. Uh and I just wanna stress that this is not rent forgiveness and renters must show that they were unable to pay due to the impact of the coronavirus shutdown. Uh this should cover both residential and commercial properties. And renters must notify their landlord writing up to fifteen days from the date of rent is due. Um I also wanted to have the ordinance include that landlords are prohibited from terminating a tenancy. Or using lockouts or utility shut-off actions. Um and automatic council review to extend the ordinance if the shutdown is still in effect past June thirty, twenty twenty. That's something we want to kind of take into consideration, too. We don't know officially when we might pass the stage one, two, and three. Um but just in case for some odd reason, it kind of gets out of control and we get shut down to June thirtieth. Um we should kind of re uh look at this uh item and readdress strengthening it or shrinking it, whatever the case might be. Um besides that, I kind of just wanted to have the uh bring you out to the council and um take your opinions on some of these items and see. How far, being a charter city, uh I'm a general law city, can we implement some of these actions here? At least to try to keep our business environment alive. Um we've been trying to, you know, grow that side of Hawthorne up. And it's taxing. The if if we start having all these people shut down left and right, you would have no business community in Hawthorne. And for our affordable housing um kind of market here in Hawthorne. The last thing you wanna see is having all these homelessness issues start increasing. Just because they weren't unable to pay rent or go to work or whatever the case might be. Uh but these were the ideas I wanted to kind of implement it in our own kind of moratorium ordinance. And uh see how far we can actually implement some of these items.
No, thank you, councilmember Awad. Um so as as you may, as you may remember. I had uh brought this up up to our city attorney and I think it may have been on the agenda and I ended up pulling it out. But I think I did make a note of it uh at during the discussion part of our last meeting. Where I had requested a moratorium of our own to take place. And uh the reason I did not go forward with the action was that, you like you said, the governor. Had an executive order prohibiting residential evictions until May first or a certain date. Um and that's why we didn't, I chose not to proceed with this. Of course, I'm still, I'm concerned about, you know, the renters. Both commercial and residential. Um but some of the, there were some recommend, there were some reasons as to why uh coming from our city attorney. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Uh yes.
That there were some concerns. Um would it be wise, would it be proper or improper to mention them now? Or would we should we restrict them to a legal confidential? Can you go ahead and tell us if you think it's improper to mention the reasons why you asked me not to go ahead and put it on?
Uh yes, I was concerned um with a takings claim made by some of these landlords. Uh from enacting such an ordinance. However, I can look more into it and prepare a legal confidential along with the ordinance. So you can understand the risk involved because it's it's more complicated than just uh allowing. Uh this moratorium to go on because it also means that these landlords aren't getting rent to pay their own mortgage. Um and the fact that uh because of the environment right now, are there other tenants that? That want to rent at this point because of the poor economy, not only local, state, and national, but you know, here in our in our city as well. But um I can certainly uh draft the eviction moratorium for both residential and commercial. And give you a legal confidential about potential risk to the city.
So I would, I would support that you give us the uh legal confidential first so that we could uh take a look and then.
I would, I would do that kind of a mentality. There wouldn't be a need to wait that. Let's see. So you don't want to happen what kind of occurred before. Where you're, you leave a window for that opportunity. For residents to be kicked out or for commercial businesses to be shut down. Uh there is no reason why not to review the ordinance at the same time and critique it the way we need to. Yes, there's risk. Every decision you make in life is risk. It's this basic business. Um but there is something we have to do in order to help this bleeding for the residents. The the many calls I'm getting and the fact that I'm, I was at near the like Armani LA Arts District where the breweries are and the production companies. They've taken a heavy hit. You have all these businesses on Hawthorne Boulevard. They've taken a heavy hit. There's no reason why we shouldn't kind of implement or see how far we could go to help not only the residents. But our own businesses here in the city. If we're business friendly, how is this something that's worrisome? Yes, if it's too strong, we can shrink it to a degree where we can handle as a city. The fear of.
You didn't, I mean, I don't know. I I really don't know frankly why you're approaching it this way, councilmember Awad. I didn't say that I was opposed to it. You ask for uh questions, you ask for opinion, and that's what I'm giving you. And nobody said that they were opposed. Nobody was saying that they were.
Made by the city attorney to be reviewed.
I have the floor. One person has the floor right now, so go ahead. Yeah, so he made it. I mean, I'd be willing to go ahead and support, like if you wanna. Um if there's anybody, if if everybody concurs, we could go ahead and have the ordinance so we could take a look at it. I mean, I mean, you did ask for a legal confidential, did you not? So then I'm.
You did. On moving forward with it.
Mr. Hadar Awad asked for a legal confidential during a statement. You did. So go ahead.
Well, regardless of whether you're asking for a legal confidential, I'm gonna give you one. Okay?
Concurrent, like if you have the draft and the legal confidential, that's perfectly fine. But to not, to just have the legal confidential without a draft, it doesn't seem.
Nobody's saying no. Nobody's saying no. So are you ready to move forward?
You know, I uh.
So what have we decided? What have we decided?
Through the chair.
A legal confidential of what a moratorium of this would look like for the city of Hawthorne, for us to review.
I'm fine with it, Russell.
I think, yeah, I think we should have a legal confidential. Um I don't see any reason why we can't have a draft moratorium at the same time.
A dual vote, that's fine.
I I concur with the rest of the city council. Let's go ahead and have a a draft that will be presented with the legal confid- confidential. Is that what you're suggesting, councilmember Awad? Alright, you have my support on that. Okay, alright, so let's go ahead. Are we, are we finished with this item? Or any final comments? Okay, so we'll move on to the the fourth, the fourth discussion item. Um I have an item on here uh to direct the city attorney to draft a disclosure ordinance for elected officials, commissioners. On all public hearing items concerning land use, zoning, and other public nuisance determinations. Disclosure uh would require disclosure of all ex parte contacts, whether principal or surrogates, nature of communication, et cetera. And we will direct, we would direct the city attorney to provide copies of draft ordinances to city council members. And the origination of this was that uh um disclosure is all about transparency. I mean, transparency is the objective of our government and uh we're, I've been proud that our administration here has been as transparent as could be. And uh there's been many policies, policies that we've taken uh uh into consideration and passed to promote transparency. For example, we made it a requirement that the planning commission's meetings would be on the internet for all residents to see. So everybody can see exactly what's going on when it comes to land use. Uh we've also uh have a policy that requires officials uh that are elected to disclose when they tell the city manager. To hire a particular employer consultant. Uh we also uh like, for example, today, the hiring, the possible hiring and acceptance of the contract for Eric Lee. Uh has been transparent and open. Uh we've also have an ordinance which would require city councils members to be notified. Uh with regards to the general fund reserve balance and operating funds. Um and notably, one of the things that we've also had is councilmember Hadar Awad. Has had the great idea of forming the Public Funds Oversight Committee, which we accepted. And he is a representative to that and it monitors the finances of the city to ensure the city's economic stability. So my next idea, and this is something that was brought before, but uh we're bringing it forth. Is to consider out a policy that would disclose the ex parte communication, ex parte. Meetings with developers, their surrogates, or lobbyists before we vote on any land use, zoning, or other items. That's something I've done um on my own accord, but I just wanted to make it official policy. So that uh I believe that this would address the issue of transparency. Because each council member would be just required to disclose all communications that they've had with developers. Before they vote on the developers' projects. And that's something that uh the public deserves to know. And this is one of the most effective manner in which to achieve transparency in our city and uh I think it's something good. And uh if any promises we made to the public, that they would be able to see exactly what's happened and how much contact we've had with developers, et cetera. And I I would like to ask the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for consideration, but I am open to comments. So go ahead.
Uh through the chair?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh wonderful idea. Uh it it does help with the transparency. Um I I don't think it kind of goes far enough. It the the main concern that you have residents with, it's it's the money that developers give to candidates and elected officials. That really corrupts the systems. Uh not necessarily meetings, yes, that and that with the money are the two main issues. Um so we should add something to that caliber in there as well. And we should also add the need of lobbyists to be registered with the city, since it's not just developers who meet with um council members. Um it kind of goes back to the whole campaign finance reform, uh to really get the corrupt money out of Hawthorne. Um and we should make it retroactive uh to the degree that we can. To really have both those um communication and if there has been any kind of donation or money going from. The developer or lobbyist or whoever it could, whoever it may be, to uh the electives in these uh open meetings. It would really strengthen that transparency. And if it's a, if it, Russell, if it makes sense to you. Um if that's something we can move forward with and it kind of implement, um having something like that in the audience would really. Show the city that we're trying to be transparent. We're trying to take out, you know, dirty developers and really run a clean city.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm going to stick to my original request of with uh just solely focusing on the ex parte discussions. We have the four sixties and your Form seven hundreds that anybody can review, that could, they can see who's donated to a campaign. So that already exists. So do I have support for for this from the rest of my councilmember colleagues? Or any comments?
Through the chair. Um I like the idea about maybe putting also not just the uh. The electoral official, but their lobbyists. The idea of the lobbyists to be included there.
Do you think they'll tell the truth?
Well.
Well, it's the same thing with councilmembers. We have, we're trying to make sure that us as councilmembers are telling the truth.
Because, you know, some, some electoral official have uh lobbyists and consultants working for them.
You may not know this, but um the city already does have an ordinance requiring lobbyists to register with the city. And their registration forms are on file with the city clerk's department.
Have have the lobbyists and consultants for the councilmembers that maybe uh being spoken of, have they registered with the city?
You know, I haven't looked at uh who filed those lobbyist uh statements, uh but they are, they are filed.
So I'd like to go ahead and uh take Mayor Protem Alex Montero's recommendation and proceed with that. Is that something you could do? Mister. Four, Form, the four sixties and seven hundreds are online or available for the public, so anybody could see who's donating to anybody's campaign.
Yeah, but it could be done prior. That's the scary thing. It it, there's ways to manipulate the money. So having it when you're bringing up a project for public hearing, why are you so afraid? If it's not going to affect you, then you shouldn't be like, okay, this strengthened. It doesn't affect anything. It's like typing another sentence in the agenda. Is it really that hard to have another sentence written?
Look, uh you wanna bring this back under that item, that's fine. You already did it. Um and. This came up, campaign donations, uh ex parte communications came up before, like two or three years ago, you didn't vote for it. So I'd like to go ahead.
I already discussed with Russell and we've sent email to him and other examples where it is coming back on a May agenda. And uh we are going to discuss it. Yeah, isn't that right, Russell, that I did want to have the uh campaign reform and um. The tax, uh term limits pre bought back on a May agenda?
Yeah, you sent me an email about putting something on the May twelfth agenda.
So I I am still trying to have this reform made. It wasn't a PR stunt. It is going to continue to be brought back until we have something to safeguard the city and its residents.
Okay, well, uh I mean, I don't think you could fool anybody that's not a PR stunt. And we know that you are running for uh mayor's, the mayorship. And uh changing the rules in the middle of the game only serve you. So let's go ahead and move ahead with uh these, this item, Mr. City Attorney. Go ahead.
Yes.
Alright. So let's go ahead and elected official reports. We're gonna start off with. David Patterson, our city treasurer.
Uh thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just wanna thank the community that's tuning in to this council meeting for participating in the process. Not letting the uh the shelter um. Uh recommendation, not let the uh the pandemic stop you from being involved in uh what's happening in your city. Uh that's it. Thank you.
Okay, uh Mr. City Clerk, Paul Jimenez?
Yes, I just have a few um updates. So uh thank you again, uh everyone who's joining us from home. Um so the LA City Board of Supervisors voted unanimously today to send vote-by-mail ballots to every voter registered for the November election. So it's something that um I pushed for um in the past. Um and it makes a lot of sense. Um others counties like Orange County was already doing it, so it's nice to see that we're following suit with them. Um residents of Hawthorne, please continue to stay home. Unfortunately, some um people are putting others at risk and that's not okay. Uh some of you guys alluded to what's going on in Orange County. For example, there are about ninety thousand people at Newport Beach between Friday and Sunday. Uh this weekend, so um that is not okay. Um a trip to the beach park is not worth putting other people's lives at risk. Um in the spirit of spreading some positive vibes to our residents, I'd like to thank everyone for doing their part in helping to stop the spread of COVID nineteen. With this in mind, there are a few groups that I'd like to recognize for being on the front lines. I wanted to do this because. Um I feel like some of the following groups are uh sometimes overlooked. So here's, uh again, I'm gonna miss some some groups, but again, I'm trying to do my part. So. Uh thank you to our meat and poultry processing workers. Thank you to our healthcare workers, uh to our paramedics, firefighters. And those who respond directly to calls where a sick person is in need of medical attention, uh to our law enforcement, grocery workers. To our grocery delivery workers, uh to those who are hard at work at making PPEs, uh whether it's homemade or company-made. Uh to our public maintenance workers, our power, electric, transportation, and construction workers, our truck drivers, our longshore women and men. Our fast food workers, our delivery, our mail delivery workers, and all other workers who are who deal directly with shipping supplies across the country. And to our migrant farm workers that are working in the fields, who play a vital role in harvesting the food that is in our grocery stores and our restaurants. So I simply wanna thank everyone on behalf of the city clerk's office. Um that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um councilmember Mike Tayeda?
Well, I um uh that was a a nice list of people, Paul. I I I I second that. I mean, my daughter works at a market and she's an essential worker, you know? And um there's a lot of people making a tremendous sacrifice uh right now. And um you know, I hope that very soon there's some relief for them. And and I, you know, I want people to be responsible. I want people to think about the person next to them and um. And and understand the seriousness of, of what's going on and, and, and that this is. At, at far with one of the great, the, the toughest things that we've ever had to deal with. Not to put too much of a burden on any one group, you know, not to. And you know, hope for, there, there is a, there's a. A bill in Sacramento right now where tenants can waive twenty five, I don't know all the details. Twenty five percent of the rent. You know, and, and so I want people to think a little bit about that because they seem to be going to the well way too, too often. And, and I, I agree with, with Hader about the, the eviction, you know. We can't evict people while they're going through the worst period of their life. But we can't, we gotta be a little careful not to, you know, kill the landlord too. And, and, and make sure that there's protection for everybody. And I think that, you know. Intelligent people will come up with that, with that conclusion and there'll be a little protection for everybody. It's really unusual times, it's bringing out the best of people. You know, everybody's glued to the TV, so you know, we all know what's going on, we all know what we need to do. We all know what's bad for, for the, you know, and I hope that someday soon. The government will allow people to use their, their own common sense and people will do the right thing. Waiting for this economy to get, get rolling again, little by little and. And give a little freedom to the people and let's see how they behave. But yeah, you guys have put out a lot of good information today and that's it, I, I hope that. That we get past this thing pretty soon and we find a cure or a treatment and a vaccine. And all of this will seem like a bad dream, but you know, that's it for me, that's it.
Okay, good, alright, thank you, Councilmember Olivia Valentine?
Thank you. So I also want to echo the thanks that were given by our city clerk. All the frontline workers and I also want to add, we have frontline workers of our own in our. H P D, our Hawthorne Police Department, our Public Works Department, our Code Enforcement, our Building and Safety. Those workers are out there in the field doing their jobs as well and I want to thank them too. Because they're, they keep, they help keep the city running. And I want to thank our city manager, Arnie Shadbear, who has taken on yet another job. That he didn't sign on for when he became city manager and that is directing. The city through this COVID nineteen crisis and I think he's done a spectacular job of directing our employees and. And, and all of us in, and the city in, in terms of helping us navigate through totally uncharted waters. I also want to thank L A Councilman Herb Wesson. For providing our city with four hundred free masks for our residents. Thank you for your generosity. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hadar Awad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I also want to echo the same sentiment that our city clerk brought out for the frontline workers. And especially for our P D, it, it's been very hard. You do hear news reports that even there are nurses and doctors that. Are even taking their own life, just seeing the amount of, of deaths that are occurring. Just from this virus that there seems to be no control of. So our frontline is. Our frontline workers are really taking it head on, it's, it's difficult. And I pray for them and their families and the fact that they're willing to risk their lives just to help us going is beautiful. I want to thank Pat Springer for the presentation today on elder abuse. Their family justice center was a beautiful grand opening, the way they have it set up is, is quite amazing. And they had two, and I believe, Mike, you were at the first one, and then there was a second one on that day too and. If you really do need any kind of assistance with this elder abuse. Sexual abuse or anything of that or domestic violence abuse, contacting that, that center and Pat Springer and Alana are good resources. And for the last thing, so I wanted to address the face mask distribution that happened on Monday. So it was a wonderful event, but the issue was that they arrived at eleven and only to find out there were like none left, so I guess not having the amount there. Was, was difficult. So I think that next time the city needs to disclose if there's a limited number available, so residents don't have to. Have a reasonable expectation of how many are given out and if they should go or not. That was the whole confusion during that time. It was a beautiful event. But it ended so quickly. So in, in light of that issue and tremendous need, I wanted to direct our city manager and city attorney. To help put together a program that allows council members to redirect their salary and stipend to a city program to purchase masks out of volume discount. And distribute those to our residents as well, in addition to any frontline workers that may need them. Since I've refused to take council salary, I've done so for the four years, I wanted my budgeted salary. To be redirected into this program, starting as far back as I legally possibly could. I believe maybe starting January of this fiscal year. And I also wanted to include the next fiscal year in that fund as well. I want to clear that I don't want to take a salary at all, I just want to use the funds to help the residents, so just redirecting it. This is really an opportunity for all council members to participate, whether they take a council salary or not. But this will be a city initiative where we can all utilize these masks and the city itself to. As, as that program was a couple of days ago, to just keep bringing out masks to the residents as far as we can. So I remember mentioning this to both you, Russell, say our city attorney and city manager. If you could look into drafting that kind of program. With the stipulations to make sure it's a fair process, that regardless of who puts money in there. Anyone could use them to distribute to any neighborhood in the city of Hawthorne. And this will be strictly a city event for all of us to utilize. Uh, city attorney, is there anything else you would need regarding that fund or program? Or is everything that we discussed in the emails sufficient?
Yeah, I, I'll prepare a legal confidential on the issues raised by that, okay?
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Is that it? Okay. Okay, Ca- Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, again, I echo all the sentiment from all of you about the frontline workers and especially, you know, for our own staff. The Hawthorne Police Department, the L A County Fire Department, the first responders. They are there every day, you know, making sure that everybody's safe, putting their lives at risk for us. Even this morning, about nine thirty, I saw one of our public works, you know. Washing one of the sidewalks right on, on Ramona and El Segundo, you know, cleaning up the sidewalk with power wash. So that to see that, you know, they still doing the work, you know, despite of all this COVID nineteen. You know, epidemic that we have, so we, my hat goes to them and like I said, you know, every day. Before I go to bed, I pray for their, for their, for their, make sure that they wake up with even stronger. Than the day before, because we know that, you know, mental health issues is another issue out there. That these workers are going through, so we need to support them wherever we can. I do agree with Mister Hadar Awad, maybe the, the stipend. You know, we can figure it out if the stipend can go towards the purchasing of, of masks. And then maybe we can, you know, maybe buy about, I don't know. It depends how many masks is going to be able to purchase it for that. But I would love to see maybe if the city and maybe even us altogether can try to get some funding out there. To support, maybe even ask some of the big business like SpaceX, a Tesla. To maybe to contribute some of money to purchase masks for the, for the people of Hawthorne, so the business can be opened, you know, safely. I wanted to remind people that the census twenty twenty is still going on. So please, you know, go online and fill up your census, because that is very important to become, so we need to make sure that Hawthorne. Is gonna have a one hundred percent count of all the residents in the city of Hawthorne regardless of your. Immigration situation, so everybody counts, your children, your grandmother, everybody who lives in your apartment in, 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 in back. Of your garage, so everybody counts regardless of guest citizenship. So make sure that we need that money for the police, for the roads, for the, for the schools, so we need, we need those money for the C D B G money, for the home fund money. So please be count and go online and fill out those ten questions, it's very easy to fill out, right? I want to wish everybody Happy Mother's Day, you know, it's coming, May tenth. It's Mother's Day, so Happy Mother's Day, because we will not meet until after Mother's Day. And also, Russell, just to put on a discussion item for next meeting. Is that Robert F Kennedy about those cars being parked, because I think maybe more than a thousand cars. Park on that parking lot, so maybe some discussion for us to figure it out what we should do next, so maybe a discussion item. On the Robert F Kennedy and the utilization of the property, so maybe something to put on the agenda, so we can discuss it, okay? So again, I want to say thank you to all of you, my colleagues, you know, out there in frontline also. Arnie, Russell, all the staff of the city of Hawthorne, you guys are the best. And thank you for your, all you can do for us, because without you, you know, the city cannot be run, so thank you very much, I appreciate you and good night.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, thank you to all my colleagues. For everything that you're individually doing, starting off from our city treasurer, our city clerk. Councilmember Awad, Councilmember Tejeda, Councilmember Valentine and Mayor Protem Montero. Thank you all for doing what you're doing to spread the word on the city programs. Doing things on your own, on your own behalf to be able to help the community. And informing the community with regards to resources. So the community is very, I've been getting a lot of great positive feedback. On everybody's efforts with regards to keeping them informed and providing resources. With regards to this COVID nineteen situation, so kudos to you. Our city staff is working, even though the doors of our city hall are closed. Right now, we do have things going on and we are meeting the services for the community, our roads are getting paved and repaired. Our trees, shrubs, landscaping is being taken care of, our parks are still being kept clean. Our police department is active and keeping us safe. Our L A County Fire Department also is constantly out there helping those in need and transporting those who are sick and helping them. And of course, we have a very large amount of nurses and health practitioners, doctors that live here in the city of Hawthorne. So I want to thank them as well and all those around the country, around the world that are doing their part, so. But I also want to make sure that the community knows that we need to pack, practice social distancing. Make sure to not go out if it's not essential, stay home. Because the quicker we are able to resolve this issue and combat coronavirus and bring it down to a minimum. The quicker we will be able to go out and enjoy life close to what it used to be. So I implore our neighboring counties of Orange County and all these other counties and all these other cities who think that they. Can get away with not listening to sound medical and health advice, that they're very wrong, they are very wrong. The almighty dollar rules, but I understand their concerns as well with the employees, they have to pay, they have to pay the mortgage. But guess what? If, if they succumb to coronavirus, they might, they themselves not, might not be around to enjoy any future. Okay, so we need to make sure that they understand that as well. So thank you all for all your efforts. Thank you all for all your feedback during the discussion items and during your reports. What we're going to do right now is going to go into a closed session. Is there anybody who would like to discuss the closed session item? Mister City Clerk, do you have any notices? No? That's a no, alright, thank you. I'll declare oral communications closed, so order. And I did note that Mayor Protem Montero did not have a go back this time, thank you. You covered it all during your presentation, I just want to let you know I noticed that. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We are now in recess. We are now in recess.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub it while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash. Rub your hands and fingers in the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach up, you're almost done. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20 plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
We have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm length.
Just because you're at home.
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20 plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
Meeting is called to order. We have met in a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the employment contract with Derek? I'd like to go ahead and make the motion.
That.
Okay. I'm going, uh, I'm going to go ahead and do the roll call. Um, okay, council member Awad?
Yes.
Uh, council member Mike Tayeda?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Uh, council member Valentine?
Yes.
And, and I vote in the affirmative, yes. Okay? So we'd like to welcome Eric Lee, uh, to the City of Hawthorne family. Um, I guess, uh, we're going to have the city clerk refer to the video just to confirm the, the amount of, the votes as stated. Mr. City Attorney, can you go ahead and, uh, take note of the votes and confirm?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
So we're good?
Yes, we're good.
Okay. Is there anything further from council members or staff? If not?
I have some, I have, I have.
Of course.
I would like for us to have a cake.
For what?
There's no more cake.
You can bring your own cake with Valentine.
I think a cake is warranted at this juncture. We'll have, let's have a cake for our, to welcome him into the family. The Hawthorne family.
You got my vote.
Yeah.
It will be on the next, the 28th meeting, right? Uh, in May 28th or 20 something?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, Arnie, you can do that. If anybody wants T-shirt, come to my office, please.
Okay, this, this meeting is now adjourned. Okay, this, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
See you guys, thanks.